Good evening and welcome to this evening's regular city council meeting.
I will call us to order and require a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Harding?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Sires?
Here.
Tiber?
Here.
All members are present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting of February 3rd. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda revisions tonight?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The first order of business will be a public hearing on the proposed FY 2021 budget for the City of Cedar Falls. First, I'll take a motion for receiving and file proof of hearing.
So moved.
It's been... Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have any written communications been filed with city clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Before moving to oral comments, we'll have a quick staff presentation from Director Rodenbeck.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, the budget can kind of be a long process. So it started this last fall. And then council had goal-setting sessions in December where we went through a lot of the parameters. Also approved the CIP, which is a major part of the budget process. We did that in January. And then last meeting at committee, there was a presentation that talked about all the factors and stuff that went into the FY 21 budget. In last meeting, we also had the new state requirement of setting the maximum levy. And so tonight will actually be the formal hearing and adoption of the 21 budget. I know before last meeting and for tonight's meeting, I know there was council members who had questions about the budget. Questions about, you know, why certain levies went up, if operating costs were increasing. And, you know, a lot of the factors that went into increases for this year in the budget really had to do with the rollback going down. Lots of things that we were able to levy under the 810. We had to move out of that into the trust and agency levy. You know, but again, just increased salary costs, pension costs, additional staffing that was asked, that was talked about at goal-setting. I mean, those were a lot of the reasons really that went in to the increases in the budget. So tonight, with the actual hearing for the budget, it does set the rate at $11.43. As was explained last meeting in committee, so that would equate to a 1% increase on residential, 4.38 increase on commercial, and then actually a 0.84% decrease on multi-residential.
Okay, thank you. And I'll open up the floor to public comment. Does anyone wish to speak? Mr. Sharp?
Rick Sharp, 1623 Birch Street, Cedar Falls. I keep seeing every year the 411 pension costs keep coming into play about the tax rate as a taxpayer's expense. I want to remind everybody sitting up here that you've contributed to the increase by hiring more employees at a higher rate. And so I'm kind of curious to see what kind of impact that had over hiring lower-paid employees. And I also have a question that I'd like to get some information from. From your FY 20 goals, it says interest income generated from the 411 Pension Reserve Fund shall be used to pay the required city contribution to the annual 411 expenses. No portion of the principal shall be used for operating purposes. So to me, that tells me that the taxpayers shouldn't be on the hook for any increases because you already said in your goals that the interest is from it. So my question would be, could I have a history of this account? When and why it was created? How much money is in it now versus when it started? How much interest is earned in on it? And how often has it not been used to cover the employer's cost for increase? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. It's quite a bit of detailed information. I'll open up to staff if you wish to comment. If not, it could be...
Mayor, I think that's going to have to be something that we respond to later. We don't have that information handy.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing none.
Did I comment on that though?
Not yet.
Okay.
Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Next item is the resolution approving and adopting the FY 2021 budget for the City of Cedar Falls. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motioned and seconded. Now I'll open it up for council discussion.
I guess I was just going to respond to the comment that the speaker had that we're hiring more employees at a higher rate. And obviously referring to the PSO as higher-paid than the firefighter. But we would have to hire even more employees at yet a bigger number than that to cover the duties that we need with the dual-trained PSO. So you got to put it in the full context of what it is.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comment from council? Yes, Mr. Tiber?
Sometimes people don't realize the work that goes into the budgetary process. I did want to give a call out to Simon Harding for some of his questions related to the 810 levy because it can get confusing as expenses move around and as the rollback occurs. What's actually happening in the budget, it's always good to, you know, get a question that reinforces the feedback. Thanks, Jennifer, for your input too.
All right, thank you. Any other council discussion? Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next item is number four. Public hearing on the proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 12th Street reconstruction project. Is there a motion to receive? Okay, thank you.
Second.
It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have any written communications been filed with city clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Before moving to oral comments, we have some staff discussion from our principal engineer, John Fitch.
Danny, can you pull up that map? All right, so tonight I'm just talking about the 12th Street reconstruction. This is the map in front of you of the 12th Street and Walnut Street. From College Street to Tremont Street is the recon of 12th Street. And then Walnut, we're going from 11th to 12th Street. As you may or may not recall, we are lowering Walnut Street about 21 inches. That's to improve site distance as you come over the crest of the hill to 12th Street. In addition to lowering, that's going to result in some retaining walls on the west properties. All those individuals have been talked to. In addition, we will be improving storm sewer and water main infrastructure on both 12th Street and Walnut Street. And then after all the studies have been done and the warrants have been looked at, you might recall that we, when we are completed with this project, 12th and Walnut will become a four-way stop control. This will require us during the construction process to come back to you with an ordinance to change that through Street of Walnut to a stop sign control. So the total estimated cost for this construction is right at $1,160,000. This will be funded by the local option sales tax, the street reconstruction fund, and Cedar Falls Utilities contributing.
Thank you. I'll open up for a public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing and hearing none. I will close that public hearing and move us into item five, which is a resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 12th Street reconstruction project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. Motion and seconded. Open up for council discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cruz?
I would have a question. You mentioned it's going to be a four-way stop. Right now Walnut is straight through. What if we made 12th Street straight through and put a stop on Walnut to continue the flow of traffic smoother? I mean, is there a traffic count that dictates doing this? Or why are we doing a four-way stop instead of just having two?
So Snyder and Associates did do a traffic study of that intersection. And with the counts that they have looked at for both streets, we look at all the different warrants as presented in the MUTCD, which is a manual of uniform traffic devices. And they go through all those different warrants, and it does dictate a four-way stop based on the speeds, the crash data, and the amount of traffic.
Warrants being... It warrants doing it? Is that what you're kind of saying?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other council discussion? Any other council discussion? All right, thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next item is new business on our consent calendar. Following items will be acted on by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that an item be considered separately. Is there anything the council wishes to pull from the consent calendar? Does anyone for the public wish to pull an item? Yes, sir. Number 12, okay. If number 12 is pulled, any other items? Okay? So I will read all except number 12. Number six is receiving and file a proclamation recognizing February 14, 2020 as the 19th Amendment Centennial Kickoff Day. Seven is receiving and file a proclamation recognizing February 19, 2020 as Community Main Street Volunteer Appreciation Day. Item eight is receiving and file the whole minutes of February 3, 2020. Number nine is receiving and file the city council work session minutes of February 3, 2020 relative to North Cedar Falls Drainage Study. Number 10 is receiving and file the administration committee minutes of February 5 relative to hearing the... Relative to a hearing to consider the appeal of employee grievance denial. Item 11 is receiving and file a petition requesting a special election to fill a vacancy in the office of city council member-at-large. Item 13 is approve applications for liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. And I'll circle back to number 12, which is to receive and file the 2019 annual reports for the Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Adjustment, Historic Preservation Commission, Group Rental Committee, Board of Rental Housing Appeals, the Housing Commission, and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Okay, it's been motioned to approve?
Seconded.
The motion and seconded. Yes, sir, you'd like to speak on that?
Hi, I'm Andrew Schroll. I am at 9:30 Newman Avenue, and I'm representing the Cedar Falls Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I'd like to present to the council and to the public just a few highlights from the annual report that is included in this meeting's agenda. Goals realized during 2019 are thanks to collaboration with the city, including renewing bronze bicycle-friendly community status for Cedar Falls through 2022, establishing a police department liaison with the committee, collaborating with public works department on reporting and clearing debris on trails, fixing trail conditions that are slippery on the northeast side of Green Hill and Cedar Heights through drainage installation, participating in the downtown visioning process, and continuing various public outreach programs. For 2020, recommendations include putting effort into a number of ongoing topics, including the timing and alignment of funding for project recommendations that will improve safety along routes, especially at crosswalks and crossing lights, elevating the Cedar Falls Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee to a standing committee similar to current boards and commissions, supporting the completion of the Metropolitan Pedestrian Plan, monitoring pedestrian motor vehicle and bicycle motor vehicle collision and injury statistics, and adopting an amended bike ordinance in collaboration with Waterloo. A topic that I'd like to draw special attention to is the adoption of snow removal recommendations for trails and sidewalks so that pedestrian and bicyclist access and safety is maintained throughout the year across the city. We have recommended a priority list for snow removal that maintains designated areas for winter recreation. Each of these items are in accordance with the committee's mission to improve the quality of life in Cedar Falls through increased opportunity for safe walking and bicycling as a viable means of transportation and physical activity. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's been motioned and seconded. Any other discussion from council? And this is... All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. That moves us into the resolution calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Is there any item from the public or from council you wish to pull?
18.
Item 18?
14.
14?
15.
15? Heard a chorus for that one. No, we're just taking the questions now for which to pull. Okay. So I have 14, 15, 18, and 20 from council. For the public, do you have any you wish to pull as well? No extra? Okay. So I'll read all except for 14, 15, 18, and 20. 16 is a resolution levying final assessment costs incurred for the city to clean up a property located at 1704 Parker Street. 17 is a resolution levying final assessment for costs incurred by the city to clean up the property located at 804, 804 and a half Seeley Boulevard. 19 is a resolution approving six occupancy permits prior to the acceptance of public improvements in the Prairie Winds Fourth Edition. Item 21 is a resolution approving a claim for non-residential relocation assistance reimbursement in conjunction with the West First Street reconstruction project. Item 22 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a stormwater maintenance and repair agreement with the Cedar Falls Gospel Hall Association. 23 is resolution approving and accepting the contract and bond of Cunningham Construction Company relative to the downtown streetscape and reconstruction project. 24 is resolution approving and authorizing execution of a professional service agreement with TerraCon Consultants to complete Iowa DNR Tier One report in conjunction with the West First Street reconstruction project. The 25 is resolution approving and authorizing execution of supplemental agreement one to the professional service agreement with TerraCon Consultants for an extension of the 2019 construction testing services through the 2021 construction season. 26 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a professional service agreements with both infrastructure and environment relative to the 2020 bridge inspection project. Item 27 is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional service agreement with both construction relative to the West 27th Corridor project, study project. Item 28 is a resolution setting... Receiving and filing and setting March 2 as the date of public hearing on the proposed plan specifications, forms, contract, and estimate of cost for the 2020 Permian Valley project. And finally, 29 is a resolution receiving and filing and setting March 2, 2020 as the date of public hearing on the proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2020 street construction project. Is there a motion to approve these items minus 14, 15, 18, and 20?
So moved.
The motion and seconded? And this requires... Is there any... No, it's no discussion. Requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us back to item 14. Resolution calling for a special election to fill a vacancy for the office of city council at large. And was that a council request? Motion... Yeah, motion approved and seconded. And I'll open up for discussion from council.
I was just hoping staff could highlight...
Councilor Miller? Go ahead and speak, please.
I was just hoping staff could outline what the plan is here.
So I'll jump in. Jackie's been the one that handled a lot of this. But statutorily, with regard to... Let me back up a second. As you all know, we received a petition with the number of signatures on it requiring that we move forward with a special election. That petition was not contested, so... And I believe there was over 2,000 signatures on the... Right around 2,000 signatures on the petition. It only required 1,000 signatures. Statutorily now, moving forward, what happens is this has to come in front of the city council for approval. But it's one of those things that it almost doesn't matter because with the petition, the county will take up the special election. Tomorrow Jackie will be working with the county tomorrow to set that special election date and time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question. A number of signatures on the petition. We're actually at the UNI dorms. I thought they had a no solicitation. Is there any repercussions from that?
The petition itself wasn't challenged, and what the state statute says, and Kevin can jump in here, but if the petition itself was not challenged, we accept it on its face.
All right, thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. No discussion from council. Requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Item 15 is a resolution approving and adopting the FY 21 council goals and objectives. Is there a motion to approve? The motion and seconded. Open up for council discussion? Okay? So that would... Mr. Rogers, would that be an amendment to strike that from?
No, I wasn't meaning to strike it only... Yes.
Okay. So any discussion from the public? All right, so this... It's been motioned and seconded. Requires a roll call vote. Please, go ahead.
Are we... Sorry, it's not clear to me what we're voting on. Are we voting to eliminate the...
No, we're voting... He didn't make a motion. He was just making a comment that he wants to vote against it.
Oh, I thought he wasn't making a motion. I have a question then. Can we do it before we... I would move that we remove the PSO chunk, which is in there, since we're going to get an update on Thursday, and we're going to give staff direction. I mean, we've given them a little bit of direction, but we're going to get a full update on there. I would like to approve the 21 council's goals and objectives to staff minus that section.
Well, the one concern with that is it's not one section. It's throughout the entire document. There are multiple references to it.
That's true.
Okay, so do you wish to withdraw the motion?
Sure.
Okay. So it's been motioned and seconded to approve the council or for the resolution approving adopting the goals and objectives. This requires a roll call vote.
Five voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next item is item 18. Resolution approving and authorizing execution of consolidated public safety communications 28E agreement with participating government agencies in Blackhawk County relative to providing consolidated dispatch and communication services. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Seconded.
The motion and seconded. Open up for council discussion? Counsel to adjourn?
Yeah, I pulled this because it appears we have no choice but to vote yes on it, but it appears that our cost would also go up. And I was just hoping for more explanation on why the 90-10 split.
Okay, certainly. So, Mr. Gaines?
Do you want to start with that? Mr. Olson?
Director Olson?
Sure, certainly. So for a number of years, we have a consolidated dispatch center in Blackhawk County, which serves all police, fire, and EMS with the exception of the State Patrol and UNI. So we have a consolidated dispatch where we all... All our calls go to, and they dispatch all of our emergency responders. What we've been paying for a number of years is a formula based upon calls for service. So the agency with the most calls for service pays the highest fee, which is a percentage figure. This year, Waterloo approached the board, which consists of all the chiefs in the county, to change that formula to a 90% calls for service, 10% population. So that worked out for Cedar Falls to pay a higher fee. That was voted on by the chiefs. I will say that we, Cedar Falls, did vote no. However, that motion did pass, so that is what our fee will be. Even though our fee increased, I believe it was, off the top of my head, $28,000, it is still the best bang for our buck, I guess you can say. There's not an option that is cheaper or that works better for us.
Thank you.
Ms. Counselor Cruz?
Just curious, how many people are voting? The police chiefs, you said, of Blackhawk County?
Yeah.
Total, or the coverage of the...
There's one... Yeah. I think there's seven. Seven entities that have voting rights.
Curious, how was the vote? Six to one?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Tiber?
Is it true that the cost would have gone up for each municipality then, except for Waterloo?
There was... We had the biggest amount... We had the largest increase. Waterloo had the largest decrease. All the other agencies were mixed in between. Some of them only a few hundred dollars one way or another.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. This requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And then last for the resolution calendar is item 20. Resolution approving and authorizing execution of an agreement with River Place Properties LC relative to conveyance of certain real estate back to the city. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
The motion is seconded. Open up for council discussion?
I just had a question on that.
Mr. Sires, go ahead.
I just had a question on that. It's not a big deal. I see Mark sitting here. When they... This was explained to us, they said it was a mistake made by the city that cost us $791,000. Now, the thing that I was wondering... Now, the thing that I was wondering is how the mistake occurred, because I can't quite remember. That's what my question was. And the second thing was, was this parking lot used as part of a number of parking spots required? And then when the city realized that they'd lost control over all these parking spots, they wanted control of them again? I mean, I couldn't quite remember, that's all. Is there somebody can explain that to me? Wasn't. Maybe Mark can. I'd.
I'd be happy to explain a little bit of that.
Yes, Stephanie.
The 2012 development agreement called for ninety-one public parking spaces to be maintained in this particular area that we're talking about, and it contemplated that the development as a whole would work to make the improvements to that parking lot, and there's just been a number of things that have changed over the years. The improvement is completed, and so the proposal is to transfer the property back for city ownership, but the cost to make the improvements is what's under consideration tonight.
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Kitchell?
So, thank you very much, and it's a good question. So let me just take everybody back for a second to 2012 when we kind of started this discussion, because we were actually the third developer of sort of everybody can set their way back machines that far. There'd been two prior developers that had tried to come in and develop that property and hadn't been successful in being able to do so. There was a brownfield, you know, issue that was there. We had, you know, a number of sort of infrastructure and underground issues that were going on. Honestly, we didn't know what was going to happen on it. I think, you know, we did the best job that we could for planning this project. I'm absolutely pleased, and I think most everybody is, that we've been able to get everything done in there. The two big projects that we really worked on with city staff on the alley and the public parking lot and really all of the plaza, which is just now coming online, were the ones that I feel like we spent the most time sort of working back and forth on together. We've done the levy improvement project. We've done the streetscape project. We've had a lot of moving pieces in all of this. We had only a finite amount of money in our TIF agreement that was there. The city has a finite amount of money in its TIF agreement, and I think we've worked by and large really well with staff to sort of figure out how to get everything done that needed to, and I'd also have a shout out for Community Main Street. They even helped out in the streetscape and raised some money, and the public stepped into it. So did we have perfect planning? No, you know, but ten years later, we got everything done, and I'm pretty proud of it. So that's, I guess, what I'd say. Thanks to everybody who helped.
All right, thank you. Bring it back to council. Any other discussion for this item? Okay, it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. That concludes the resolution calendar. The next item is bills and payroll. Is there a motion?
So moved.
The motion is seconded. Any discussion? Requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, there are council referrals. Are there any referrals from council?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
I was contacted by Community Main Street regarding a portion of the parking conversation, and I would like to make a referral back to committee to discuss eliminating enforcement on Saturdays.
Okay. So it's been motioned to remove enforcement on Saturdays in downtown?
Have a discussion about eliminating enforcement on, parking enforcement on Saturdays.
Okay, so would this be to committee or staff? Have staff look at it?
To committees.
To committee, okay. So there's a motion. It's been motioned and seconded. All in?
And I guess my intent, just to clarify, is that staff would look at that as part of that discussion? In a committee meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Can we ask to elaborate on this? What's happening or what's the?
I believe Community Main Street's here. I think they're seeing some things on Saturday. They pointed out a couple of things in the letter to me that there weren't a whole lot of things in the WGI parking study, and they're seeing some negative effects for some of their business owners on Saturday. So I felt it worthy of a discussion.
All right, thank you. So it's been motioned and seconded. We had discussion. Any other thing to bring up? Okay, so this is a voice vote, if I'm right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, that passes. And next, we're into city council updates. Are there any updates from council?
While we're on Community Main Street, I'd like to take a moment to thank Carol Loy for, what is it, ten or twelve years of hard work as a Main Street Director downtown Cedar Falls. She's not leaving town, but she's moving on to Des Moines to help other communities do the same thing. So downtown would be the same without you, Carol. So congratulations on all you've done.
Agreed.
You'll be greatly missed. Any other, let's see, was that a council? Move to staff updates. Mr. Gaines, do we have any updates from staff?
I don't think we have anything, Mayor.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Rebecca Abrel. Do we have a U and I update?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This month, U and I students have been celebrating Black History Month. Northern Iowa Student Government encourages everyone to join us in celebrating by participating and getting involved in events taking place around the community. We also have a guest speaker, Erin Brockovich, coming to campus on February twenty-fifth at seven PM at Gallagher. Tickets are free and available to be picked up at any of the U and I ticket locations. To go along with that, there's also going to be a movie screening of the Erin Brockovich movie on Wednesday, February nineteenth, at three o'clock in the John Deere Auditorium located in Curis, just to get a bit of an understanding, a better, a better understanding about her life before she comes on, onto campus to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our staff updates and moves us into public forum. Speakers will have one opportunity for up to five minutes to speak on topics germane to city business. So anyone from the public wishes to speak tonight? Yes, Mr. Sharp?
Rick Sharp, sixteen twenty-three Burt Street, Cedar Falls. I think it was appropriate that we highlighted the Nineteenth Amendment proclamation, which gave women the right to vote. It was good to highlight that. Despite the majority council's objections, we are also recognizing the right of the citizens to vote with a petition that calls for the special election. So what better way to celebrate our rights and freedoms than to hold a July Fourth fireworks celebration at Prairie Lakes Park? I provided everybody with information, including a proposed site plan, a fireworks vendor, ideas, and cost. For around fifteen thousand dollars, we can have, have an awesome twenty-minute fireworks show. Probably for around ten thousand, we can have a fifteen-minute show. But we do have to act fast, as a vendor would like to be notified by mid-March so he can get another crew lined up for the show. Since I had brought this up at a previous council meeting, I have been approached by numerous citizens who said this is a good idea and Cedar Falls needs to do it. And then a second thing I just want to bring up, I'm a firefighter. I just want to clear up some issues that came up at previous council meetings and stuff we're seeing. Sick leave usage overtime is not included in our pension, despite what people say is not in our pension. We do not get any type of sick leave severance cash payout, nor does our sick leave convert into health insurance plan like it does for non-union management. We also do not get Social Security either, unlike the employees that are on IPR's pension. I just want to make that clear, so that it sounds like there was some misunderstanding in the public end up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Anyone else wish to speak in public comment?
Mayor?
This is public forum, so, well, who does?
About the?
Yes, we can, so.
Okay. What do we need to do to further along the discussion about potentially having fireworks?
Aye.
Well, I can intercede. I know that there's been a request to do a referral forward. I believe that'll come forward in the next session. Typically, the rule has been not to bring forward referrals that, that day. So it's brought to me to do a referral. I said if that can be included in the next council packet, it'll give you a chance to see all the information. We can decide on it then. So I believe that'll be the next appropriate step.
Committee or council?
It'll, it'll come to council as a referral, and then.
Okay.
So that'll be next week, or next session you should see that. Okay?
All right, Lee Anne Saul, eighteen twenty-five West Green Hill Road, Cedar Falls. I have two items. One is concerning, yes, I'm a Republican. I'm the chair of the Republican Party, and we requested to rent the Cedar Falls Rec Center for a fundraiser. It'd be like a general meeting, a chili supper, and all of our candidates would talk. We were denied that. We were told that city facilities are not rented to political parties, and that was my treasurer making that phone call at the same time I called the Cedar Falls Senior or the Community Center and asked to rent that for that purpose. And I was called back by the gal in charge at the library and said that city policy is that we do not, city does not rent public facilities to political parties. So my question is, when was that decided? Who decided it? Is that written policy? And what do political parties, what's the definition of that? It is a taxpayer-funded facility. All taxpayers built, helped build that, those facilities. Like, is Gateway Park not rented, rentable by a candidate to have an event in? So I would like to have information, more information on that and clarification. And then what is the definition of political parties? Is it just Republican, Democrat? Does it include Libertarian? Does it include any political type group? My second item is I watched in dismay the work session on the PSO at home, and I wasn't going to come, but I feel like city council had an opportunity to vote for transparency in moving forward with a larger discussion on the issue and inviting in all sides. And of course, that was voted down tonight by our city council. I'm very disappointed in that. I felt like this was an opportunity to show that we, as a city and as a city council, was willing to see and hear more. Just wanted to register that disappointment with the city council in that that did not happen. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Saul. There, I've been discussing with Ms. Saul about this issue with the ability for groups to rent, like who can, who can use the facilities, and would it, would it be possible to hear from Mr. Rogers just slightly, what the, or the, was it, are we calling it principle? Practice? What our practice is, for now?
Which my definition of practice is, it's not written down. Policy is written down. Not everyone will agree with that, but it's my understanding that it's been a decades-long practice of the city not to make city facilities available for political campaign purposes. And I think that's, I've been told at least that that's been enforced consistently over the decades, and, and so that's, that's what city practice is currently.
And, and seeing that it's, it's a practice and not something written down, I would generally be in favor of, of the more liberal view to allow something, but just from discussing internally, I think it'd be more unfair to change right in the middle of a, of an election cycle if, if we were going to do that. So I will, as mayor, I will keep the, the, proceed, the practice, the practice in place. Thank you for now.
I have a question to Mr. Rogers. Are we looking at a freedom of speech impediment here? I mean, you get the chance to voice your views, good or bad.
This, it's expressing your views. Of course, you have a First Amendment right to do that in any public facility, but this is a little bit different. This is campaign purposes, and there's specific Iowa Administrative Code guidance on that, and the State Ethics Board has weighed in too on that, and so it's up to the city to set that practice.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for public comment? Mrs. Ryan?
TJ Frye, thirteen nineteen Austin Way. Just for the people that, that weren't watching earlier, there were some statistics thrown around, maybe just some clarification. Statistics shown during the work session were that crime in Cedar Falls is down seventeen percent in the last ten years. Then the other statistics was, the statistics used was, fire is down sixty percent as a nationwide statistic. What is the statistic for the city of Cedar Falls this year, or I guess we can go with the last ten years? The other thing with the cost of dispatch, it's my understanding that part of the reason why is certain departments, probably all of them for that matter, is dictated based on calls for service, your cost. A lot of departments were going to artificially lowering their calls for service, trying to lower their dispatch costs. So the cost of the, the population has been figured in. The calls for service, and I may be a little bit off, I tried to jot it down really quick, between January nineteenth and the twenty-fifth, that were put up earlier. It was approximately five per day for fire, sixty-ish per day, I believe, for the police side. I just wondered how many of those sixty were self-initiated. Obviously, a fire department doesn't self-initiate anything, so I wondered if, if the numbers would be a little bit more comparable that way. And then I just want to express my displeasure for the special meeting on Thursday. I mean, all of a sudden, we're just springing this on citizens like it's nothing. The very first time anybody had ever saw anything to do with full implementation of the PSO model was tonight, when it was put up on the screen for you guys to see. It's unfortunate, but obviously somebody had some forethinking that this was coming. Somebody had more knowledge than others, maybe some insider knowledge, I don't know, but it feels like some things were being done without the council being aware, maybe Mr. Mayor not being aware, but it seems like this was done kind of in a blind, with people's eyes closed, because it was clearly put into a presentation, so somebody knew something about it and didn't tell anybody. There's, there was a few people that stood on my very doorstep and said, there's always room for traditional firefighters. That'll never go away. They're purely supplemental, but tonight, we've seen otherwise, and I feel sorry for those guys, and I wouldn't come to the table either if I was going to get shown the door. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. Anyone else wish to speak for public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing none? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. The motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.